We call out, made the order this time. We have a call, we got six or seven. At this time, shall we stand for invocation, pledge allegiance to the flag? Shall we pray? Father, we come this evening with faithful and grateful hearts for your many blessings. We know you've been our help and aid since past and you have the hopeful years to come. And as we come, Father, we ask you to give us the direction and use us according to that in glory. We pray in all may to God you'll bless our county and bless the citizens of that county. What we do tonight be done according to that will and that will only. In your praise, then we do pray, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First thing on that journey is to prove our minutes.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Motion is second that the minutes be approved. Are there any questions? All in favor? Six, yes. Next be our claims.
Second motion? Over.
Thank you.
Motion is second, the claims be approved. Are there any question on the motion? Not all in favor? Those opposed. Next is announcements. Do we have an announcements?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll make one real quick. For those of you that are planning on attending the seniors Thanksgiving dinner, that has been moved to the community center this Thursday at noon. So all those who weren't attending, this site has been changed.
Thank you. Let's move down to each presentations. Do we have anybody here from Mrs. Mary Elizabeth Washington family? Seeing none, um, from Mrs. Gwendolyn Gregory, see, Mr. Gregory. Y'all come, Father, please. Supervisor will come and present this to you.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. Want to make this resolution. Whereas Gwendolyn Louis Gregory was born in Charlottesville, Virginia, the oldest daughter of Gladys Lewis. Whereas she was educated in the Buckingham County School System, graduating in the Buckingham County High School's bicentennial class of 1976. In high school, she was a stellar student and gifted in shorthand, accounting and typing. After high school, she earned her associate degree in secretarial science from Sochi, Virginia Community College in Keysville, Virginia. Whereas she gave her life to the Lord at an early age and was baptized as a member of Oak Hill Baptist Church. She was a faithful member to the church and served on the Usher and missionary boards. Upon marriage to Douglas Gregory in 1987, she became a member of Baptist Union Baptist Church. Douglas and Gwendolyn were later installed and served Baptist Union Baptist Church as deacons and deaconess. Whereas she had a love of family and community. She was an active parent and grandparent. She took special pride in being soccer grandma. She enjoyed music, books, crime shows, game shows and TV westerns. Whenever she had the opportunity, she would travel, shop and spend quality time with her family. As a supporter of Waterworks players, she loved the arts and live theater. Whereas she served the Buckingham County Public School System for 42 years. Beginning her career as a secretary at the Buckingham County Junior High School in 1979, career opportunities led her to positions at the county's school board central office, where she was known for her fiscal responsibility, meticulous financial records and dedication to any task or project to which she was assigned. Her positions included being administrative support to the director of facilities and the food service department accounts payable clerk. Whereas at the time of her retirement, Gwendolyn Louis Gregory had worked for seven school superintendents and was the administrative assistant slash secretary to the superintendent of Buckingham County Public Schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize and express our deepest appreciation to Gwendolyn Louis Gregory for her 42 years of dedication to the Buckingham County Public School System. We express our deepest condolences to her husband Douglas, her daughter Desiree, her grandchildren Logan and Haley and the rest of the family and friends that Gwendolyn Louis Gregory so dearly loved. Signed, Joey N. Chambers, Jr., Chairman, Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. Thank y'all for coming tonight. And we give you all the greatest condolences. I know it was, she was a fine lady. I know I worked with at the school system for indifferent capacity. So she was, she was really a fine lady. And thank y'all for.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank all y'all for coming.
Yeah. Hey, how you doing, girl? Hey.
Pretty cowboy.
Want to thank Mr. Garrett and thank the Gregory family. At this time, we're moving down to H three. Peter Francisco, Soil and Water Conservation District Annual Update.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Good evening. Barbara Teepel is passing out a copy of our fiscal 2324 annual report, as well as Charlotte Drake. She's actually has tonight's highlights that we're going, that I'm reading over and I'm presenting to you. The Peter Francisco Soil and Water Conservation District, PFSWCD, requested time with you tonight to update you on all the activities over the past year. We want you to know that we are here as a resource for you as a board, members, for county staff and the community members. You are all welcome to call on any of our directors or staff. The district has a little background for everybody here tonight. The district is governed by an elected board of directors with two elected from each county and two appointed directors. Elected directors representing Buckingham are Kevin Dunn and Donna McGray, who are with us tonight. Barbara Teepel, over here on the side, is one of our appointed directors. Associate directors are from our partner agency, Virginia Cooperative Extension, is Jennifer Ligon, the Agricultural Natural Resource Agent, and Dr. Ruth Wallace, the Buckingham Senior 4H Agent. And she's back there. And we have Gwen Tyler, who also serves now as our treasurer and as an associate. Elected directors representing Cumberland are the chairman Todd Smith and vice chair Terry Seal. Amber Taylor, the Cumberland Agriculture and Natural Resource Agent, is our Virginia Cooperative Extension appointed director. And she's at the Cumberland office. Associate directors over there are Verdi May Jamerson, our Cumberland producer, and then we have Linda Eames, who's a Cumberland 4H agent. We have five staff, Kelly Snotty, our senior conservation specialist, been with the district for 19 years now. Cody Smith, not with us tonight, is our conservation technician, now going into his third year. And Charlotte Drake, right here with us tonight, is also been with us about a year. And she is our, actually our conservation education coordinator. Jesse Hudgens is our equipment manager handling our no-till drills now. And myself, I'm Sherry Ragland, the district manager, heading into my 25th year with the district. In addition to local support from our counties, the Commonwealth of Virginia supports the Peter Francisco District through the financial and administrative assistance provided by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, known as DCR, and the Virginia Soil and Water Conservation Board. So we offer a lot of programs. Our cost share programs provide cost share assistance to install conservation practices geared toward the improvement of water quality. Our program is broken up into two areas, agriculture and residential, with the distinction being conservation practices for agricultural operations versus practices for homeowner needs. Our agriculture practices fall under the Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program with funding provided by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. There are a total of 66 agricultural projects between last year and this year's funding that are covered under contract or construction as of today in Buckingham and Cumberland. For agricultural programs alone, the total amount of funding approved for projects so far this fiscal year, plus attached to the projects carried over from last year, is approximately $1 million. We still have funding available for projects this fiscal year and applications are taken continuously. We encourage landowners and producers to reach out to us at any time to discuss potential projects. Our residential practices, our cost share programs, our ministers, our septic financial assistant to homeowners in Buckingham and Cumberland County. We offer two different grants. One is federally funded through a 319 TMDL Department of Environmental Quality, known as DEQ, grant in the Slate River watershed only. And the other is a local grant, which covers the remaining portions of Buckingham and all of Cumberland. The TMDL 319 grant offers 50%, 280% assistance based on income level for septic tank pumpouts and system repairs. Cody Smith has applied for a continuance on this grant and we hope to hear something before June of 2025. We thought we had ended, but we're gonna, they're continuing on. We do such a good job here. So far in fiscal year 2025, of July 1, 2024 to today, residents in Buckingham for the district has approved cost share funding in the amount of $15,248 towards the 319 TMDL grant. $6,712 in our local funding for those outside of the Slate River, Buckingham and Cumberland County. This totals 42 septic pumpouts, one septic replacement and one simple repair. If you'd like more information about the program, you can visit our website and contact Cody. We also appreciate, and I can't say this enough, the septic companies and past participants in sharing this information with customers and neighbors. At one time, we went out and did flyers, like door knockers, door hangers, and I think a lot of people thought we were just a joke. So, but we've been doing this now for 10 years. You know, we have the health department that works with us in both counties. And again, our septic companies really do promote the program. On to erosion and sediment control program. The district continues to provide plan review services for the erosion sediment control program to the county. In 2024 calendar year, Kelly reviewed six plans in Buckingham County, consulting and working with Lynn and Nikki on sites as needed. And Kelly also reviewed two plans with Cumberland and she consults with their staff, Stephanie Johnson, on a regular basis. Now I'm gonna let Charlotte kind of cover over the education portion of this.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte Drake and I'm the district's conservation education coordinator. For education programs, in addition to conservation planning and cost share assistance, we offer educational programming for our youth and adults. Upon school and/or a teacher's request, we provide conservation education programs to complement SOL requirements. We often partner with other agencies during these programs, such as our local state parks, Holiday Lake 4H Center, DGIF, VCE, 4H, Department of Forestry, FSA and NRCS. Some of our educational programs are partially funded through the, through a grant from the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Fund, through the sales of DMV Chesapeake Bay license plates. I encourage teachers to give me a call to plan a classroom session, a field day or an after-school program. Lessons, lesson plans and activities for each program we offer are available on our website. In our educational outreach highlights for youth, we offer multiple after-school programs on topics such as erosion, pollinators, the water cycle, soil, rocks and minerals, importance of water for the body, biological, chemical, physical water quality monitoring. Also, I assist our Envirathon coaches with training topics in preparation for the area competition coming up in April and the state competition coming up in May. For adults, we will be holding our annual informational dinner slash update with partnering agencies this coming Thursday night. For our college scholarships, the district offers annual college scholarships to students in Buckingham and Cumberland. Applicants must be a full-time student who is currently enrolled in or who has applied to a college freshman level or undergraduate level curriculum. We begin advertising for scholarship applications in January of each year. Applications are due back to me in March. If you know anyone or planning to or already majoring in natural resources or environmental studies, please send them our way. We have three recipients for the 2024 scholarship. Jordan Doryer of Buckingham, who is attending Sweetbrier College. Eleonora Dunn of Buckingham, who is attending Virginia Commonwealth University. And Rebecca Sanderson of Cumberland County, who is attending Virginia Tech. For YCC and Forestry Camp, we also offer scholarships for students to attend Youth Conservation Camp, YCC, at Virginia Tech in July for a week and Camp Woods and Wildlife, formerly known as Forestry Camp, held at Holiday Lake 4H Center. Our YCC campers came from Cumberland this year and they were Bailey Robinson and Caitlin Kelsey. And they were a blast to be with in Virginia Tech with no AC. All camp counselors, Peter Francisco staffers, Cody and myself were counselors. And all camp counselors are soil and water staff from across the state or partnering agency staff. For our Envirathon, the district supports local high school students to participate in the Envirathon competition, which is a natural resources competition where student or high school students are tested on the topics of soils, forestry, aquatics, wildlife and a current specific environmental issue. And they are all, and they also prepare an oral presentation in which they solve real-life environmental problems. The only requirements for a team are a minimum of five high school students and one adult advisor or chaperone. Cumberland High School has one team coached by Mr. Josh Fleener, who is the FFA advisor for the 2024-25 competition year. For the VASWCD poster contest, the district promotes the Virginia Association of Conservation District's poster contest by sharing with our local schools and art teachers an opportunity for students to enter this conservation poster contest. This year's theme was "May the Forest Be With You Always." We had four participants from kindergarten to 12th grade this year. To see the artwork for these students, visit our website. Price Davis in kindergarten through first grade category was our winner and he attends Buckingham Primary School. Emma Ostrander in the fourth through sixth category attends Central Virginia Christian School. Walker Taylor, also in the fourth to sixth category, also attends Central Virginia Christian School. And Oleksandra Aliskia in ten, in the 10th to 12th grade category, attending Central Virginia Christian School. Please feel free to call the office or send me an email. My contact information is charlottemayby@vaswcd.org. And for more information about our programs, you can visit our website at peterfranciscoswcd.org.
One more topic are watershed dams. Under the public law of 566 Watershed Project and Flood Prevention Program, over 150 watershed dams have been built across the state of Virginia with financial and technical assistance from the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Services, known as NRCS. Peter Francisco Soil and Water Conservation District is the local sponsor of 17 NRCS assisted watershed projects that provide flood protection for Buckingham and Cumberland Counties. Peter Francisco's primary responsibility is to operate and maintain the watershed flood control dams in accordance with state dam safety regulations. We coordinate with both Buckingham and Cumberland County Emergency Services personnel for any emergency action planning and implementation. For our watershed flood control dam from this program year, all 17 dams were mowed twice this year, once in the spring and in the fall. We will be performing our annual inspections of the dams in the next couple of months per our state requirements. We have received funding for satellite remote monitoring devices that can be installed on the dams to measure rainfall and lake level rise as part of our emergency action preparedness. We have been approved for funding for all 17 dams to have these devices installed. And we will be working towards the completion of that in the next few months. Four of the dams have monitoring devices installed and they were completed last year. We had extra excitement beyond our usual dam operation and maintenance this year during the remnants of Tropical Storm Debbie in August and Hurricane Helene in October. We actively performed our emergency action procedures, or as we call it, EAP. During Debbie, one of our dams had high water that caused our monitoring equipment to notify us of potential action stages and we worked with our local emergency services to take precautions during that time. During Helene, four of the dams had actively fully flowing emergency spillways, which caused us to move to a stage three for one of them and a stage two for the others in our emergency action plans. The dams acted as designed and we had no damage after the storms. We are thankful for our communication and working relationship with our local emergency services and VDOT for their swift action on EAP measures and road closures. A big thank you to Charles Kirby, who coordinated for us to hold an after-storm action meeting with the district, county EMS, VDOT, DCR Dam Safety, and the National Weather Service and the Virginia Department of Emergency Services Management. We were very fortunate to come out of this storm action with little damage, but gained a lot of knowledge on the process and we intend to improve our EAP actions from this. That sums it up for our activities this year and we thank you for allowing us time on your agenda tonight. The district appreciates the working relationship that we have and continue to have with the county. You're welcome to call the office or come by and see us anytime. And I have my directors here. Do y'all have anything you want to add?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Any questions or everybody good?
Anybody have any questions for Bill Ragland?
Well, you have all the information in front of you. You got our emails and our website and, you know, check it out. It's got a lot of information and, yeah, we got good things going on.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know I got a couple of watersheds in my district and some of the citizens actually don't fish. But then when I'm fishing, they said they get them locked and when I'm getting in, is that open to the public to fish and all the things?
No, sir. I, the only, I will share with you that they're private landowners. So do you want to add anything onto that?
We, we take care of the easement on the day. All of our entry and, you know, egress, interest points are actually through private landowners. We just have.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We move on down to public comments. Do we have anybody to sign up?
We have three.
Three sign up. You got three minutes to speak in public comments. Yeah, the first one.
Rick Ewing from the library. And Bob Rec will be next.
I, thank you for allowing me to speak, Chairman Chambers and the rest of the board members. I'm, I'm here representing the library. This isn't really a library-related thing that I'm gonna speak very briefly about. I'm really here to, to say thank you to Todd Shoemaker, the director of the county rec department and the deputies from the sheriff's department that were involved in this. And there's a private citizen who I won't name and, and Charles Kirby was there sort of watching out. There was a problem with an individual who was not doing well outside of the library around the rec center. He had been in the library earlier in the, the day before and was trying to get back in the library, very, very agitated. And the library staff was in, in fear for their safety. And Mr. Shoemaker and a private citizen blocked the door so that he couldn't get into the library. They did it very professionally, very calmly. I've, I've seen the video. And then finally, the, not finally, but shortly thereafter, the deputies showed up and they handled themselves very professionally and, and the incident was, was taken care of. And I just wanted to say thank you publicly to those folks. And, and as always, thank you for your support of the library. We normally don't have that much excitement at the library. But we did, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bob Rec, District One. Linda Morelles will be next.
Bob Rec, District One. I'm here to publicly thank Cody Davis and Jamie Shoemaker. This took place more than a month ago, and I wasn't able to get here, but I need to publicly thank them. On a Thursday afternoon at 3:00, we lost internet and phone service. So the first thing you do is you call Bright Speed. Well, of course, I don't know if you ever got involved with Bright Speed, but you end up in the Philippines, and you go through their automatic tape, and then it says, "Goodbye, goodbye." Then you have to call back. So after two hours of trying to get through, I was told that it must be a problem at my house because nothing's showing up on their board. So they said, "Well, send somebody to your house between 8:00 and 5:00 the next day," which was a Friday. Waited 8:00 to 5:00. At 6:00, we got a text from them, "Nobody's showing." Well, brainstorm. Anyway, it went on for Saturday, call again, Sunday, call again, Monday, call again, Tuesday, call again. And on Wednesday, I said, "You know, I have to get somebody that speaks in the United States." I called Cody Davis, and Cody said to me, he said, "I will contact Jamie Shoemaker." Within a half hour, I had a phone call back from Jamie Shoemaker and said that he had spoken with the people in Charlottesville. And about an hour later, I got a phone call from Bright Speed, one's out of Charlottesville, telling me that they'll get to it. It turned out that the people working on the road cutting the grass locked the container out, the electrical, and cut the wires up. So I could tell you that if it wasn't for Jamie Shoemaker, we probably still would be without phone service, and I needed to come here and publicly thank them. And the other one I would like to thank is that the sheriff's office, we ran into a problem. We were stuck in the gravel hill garbage section. The car would not shift into park. My wife calls me, and she says, "I can't get the car only in reverse." So I go there. This is 5:00 to 3:00 on a Sunday afternoon, and I call Subaru, because it's a '22 Subaru out back, and I called them, and they said they'll be there in an hour and a half. Well, no show, an hour and a half, no show. The next one, "Oh, they'll be here," such and such. So in the meantime, my wife said, "Nobody's going to be able to get into here unless," you know, so I called the sheriff's office, and they said that, they gave me a sheriff's officer, and he told me how to get the guy in and out. And so I said, "Thank you." Well, back around 7:00 o'clock at night, I'm still there, and Subaru did not get me a service. Anyway, the woman that was on the desk said, "Mr. Rec, are you still at the gravel hill dump?" And I said, "Yes." She put me through to a company that came out within an hour and got the car brought onto the, the bed and taken away at a quarter to eight at night from 5:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon. So I need to thank that lady, and I did not get her name, but it was the sheriff's office. So I needed to thank two peo, well, three people for all of the, the good service that I got from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Linda Morelles, District Two.
Gentlemen.
Hi.
Gorgeous, perfect tomato. I am harvesting in November. I'm getting five pounds a day, and if none of your gardens are still producing, I feel sorry for you. But this is to show you why I'm back here again this month. So I hope you remember why I came. I'm asking for a little assistance for a greenhouse. I've been asking for this assistance since February, and I, I see in the minutes here that Piedmont Senior Resources has asked for some funding for the remote medical event. I think it's a wonderful idea. I was a medical technician in the Air Force, and so I'm all for training for anything like that. And it says that this was in addition to the $1,000 they requested in August. Once again, good call. I think it's a great idea. I've asked for this since February, and I've just never heard anything. So once again, I come bearing fruit, literally. I've got a bag of tomatoes outside if anybody wants any of them, and that's all. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That's all we have.
Okay, let's move on to VDOT matters, Mr. Scott Frederick.
Chairman and board, thank you for having me. Got a quick update for you tonight. It's been relatively quiet this month so far, not going well. The, so we're currently mowing secondary roads, as you heard the guy in public comment mention. We're pretty much done the primary system with the exception of Route 56. We had some equipment breakdowns that set us a little bit behind. I think last month I told you we'd be done by mid-November, and we're right there, and I think we'll finish 56 tomorrow. We finished replacing the pipe that I mentioned last month on Allen's Lake Road, so that's complete. It's put back in the way it should be put in, and hopefully we'll get a good life out of it. We're also cutting brush throughout the county. We replaced a pipe on Woodland Church Road. We've been machining gravel roads throughout the county, specifically on Moholey Road, 683. They've done a lot of work to that road to get it back up to, to good standards again. Routine maintenance as work orders come in, which is pothole patching season is starting up, so we're trying to take care of those as, as they come up. You probably saw contractor crews out on 60 in the recent weeks, doing some corrective work there at, right near the intersection of Route 631. So that, that, I rode over it on my way here, and it felt pretty good. I think they'll be working on final striping soon. Some rural rustic work that we'll be doing through the winter, cutting brush, grading and doing drainage, replacing pipes where needed, then we'll be putting the base stone down, getting ready to shoot the surfaces in the spring. Firehouse is the first road on the list, and we're going to go in order. I wrote down six of them that I believe we'll be working on this year. It'll be Firehouse, Elkin, Pembleton, High Hill Road, Plantation Road, and Avon Road. And I may have missed one or two. There's a lot on the list, but we're going to get as many done as we can this winter and shoot them all out in the spring. Supervisor Garrett, you asked me last month about putting signage up where we know water gets high, and we don't have anywhere in the resident, like I said last month, I couldn't think of any. I checked and asked around. We don't have anything like that in the residency, the four counties that I help serve, but I guess in the past we had done something like that. So I think you mentioned seeing it in Henrico County. But we, we currently don't install any of those kind of signs, and the people I've asked about it at the district reminded me of the turn around, don't drown, so.
Thank you for checking into that.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that. And then I think that's all that I came prepared to speak on tonight, but if you guys have anything for me, I can take comments.
District One. And then District Two.
Mr. Freddie. I'm going to continue, like I said, when I was going to beg you for the blinking lights every month for the next year, I'm going to thank you for the blinking lights.
Well, I appreciate it.
I just want to tell you the lights are blinking, and the people of District Two are happy, and. Okay. And second of all, I had two instances this month. I had one instance on Back Mountain Road. The constituent told me about where the water had washed. Before I could even get to you all, Mr. Stone had corrected both problems on Back Mountain Road.
Okay, good.
The day last week, I had, Mr. Miss Johnson had a tree fall in front of them on the way to the funeral on the road below Chuck Stop that goes back toward Shelton's Garage. And Mr. Walker, I called him, and he got to that quicker than the 911 service could in Buckingham. So I just want to tell you that don't plan on transferring Mr. Stone and Mr. Walker to my district anytime.
Hope to keep them for a long time.
And I want to tell you, they did a great job. And Mr. Palmer just wrote down, this is my district, right there next to the Army Store, they like to get a passing zone taken in front of the Army Store.
Taken out.
Taken out.
It's right at the, it's right at the entrance.
Okay, on 60 there.
I kind of understand it's a really congested area. It was brought to my attention, but it's not my district, so I was just passing it on so I was getting, but.
Yeah, I guess with a lot of traffic there at the store, it's a concern too.
It's really.
I'll get traffic engineering to take a look at it, and the passing zones where you have a lot of driveway traffic make me nervous, because I think people think they only have to look to the right, but you might have somebody passing.
Of course, you got, you got the buggy traffic coming in and out when they have events, and it is, it is, it's a safety issue. I mean, I'm just, like I said, I was passing along.
Yeah, thank you guys for bringing it up. Like I said, I'll put, I'll put that to traffic engineering for a study, and they may want to remove it, or they may opt to leave it in, but we'll, we'll see what they say.
Maybe they can move it down the road away from it or something, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
And that's all from District Two, and I just want to tell both of those people, thank you. They actually got to it as quick as possible. One even got to it quicker than what I, that was even a call, and the other one was like 45 minutes. Maybe they watched the videos about complaining about you speaking on the blinking lights, but I just want to tell both of them, thank you very much, okay?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Three.
I don't have any issues to report, but I, I would like to say thanks for the quick action on Highview Road and Elkin Road fixing the ruts that were washed out by the heavy rains during the hurricane. They did it in a timely fashion, and again, I appreciate everything y'all do.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Four.
Yep, just those two matters that I spoke to you about before. Check the speed, maybe the possibility of getting 45 mile an hour speed limit all the way through.
On Route 649 there at the bridge.
Yeah, Slade River Mill Road, because it is on the other side of the bridge. Trying to see maybe if it could be done all the way to Route 20. And then the other one was the roadside table sign up here, but you said that is, somebody else's jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's, that's a specialty sign, and it's managed out of the district. So I'll, I'll get that checked and see if they know that it's down.
And just check on that gravel, then that 649 that y'all put in, because I noticed that it did settle, you know, quite a bit during that rain, so I don't know if you might have to add a little more to it or double, but it's still better than it was.
Yeah, I remember you bringing that up last month. I'll, I'll make sure it gets checked.
I could tell where it was down, you know, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And District Five.
I talked to Brother Frederick earlier, and he doesn't want to hear any more of my complaints or anything, so. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We don't have anything in District Six. We thank you what you already did for help us.
Thank you, sir.
District Seven.
We already talked about it. He's doing good.
Thank you. Thank you, board, for having me.
Happy Thanksgiving. We don't see you no more.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll say too, they did a good job where Trouser and Creek comes out on Route 60, getting rid of that hump in the road that you kind of took a jump out.
Freddie, tonight's been a good night job, right? I mean, everything is gone perfect, so.
You know somebody's something's wrong.
Thank you.
Mr. Emerson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we have a public hearing for case 24 S U P 348. Our applicant is Karen Krebs. She is on the phone and joining us virtually. This case was introduced to the Board of Supervisors last month. It is located at Tax Map 34, parcel 20, lot C. It's two and a half acres, and it's at 504 Woodland Church Road, Buckingham, in the James River Magisterio District. It's currently zoned Village Center. The request from the applicant is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast short-term rental, such as VRBO, et cetera. We do have the 11 conditions attached to this, and I think that we did confirm that condition number five would, would stay in place to follow the solid waste ordinance as well. As I mentioned, Ms. Krebs is on the phone to answer questions or concerns that you may have.
Anybody had any questions for her? Hearing done, I guess, open the public hearing up?
No one signed.
No one spoke or closed it. What is the pledge of the board?
I'm making motion that we approve it.
Second.
I second.
If it's motion and second, we approve this.
Can I hit the button?
Are there any questions? All in favor? Six yes, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, the next case this evening is an introduction of 24 S U P 349. Our applicant is Daniel Fisher, and the property in which the permit is being requested is Tax Map 151, parcel 15. This does contain 41.6 acres, and the project will be located on the portion of the property as indicated in his site plan and narrative. Please note that the application and the confirmation from the planning commission process is that this will be located on four acres of that 41 acre, should he finalize his sales contract with Mr. Amos Bowler, who is currently the landowner. And this is all located near 18340 East James Anderson Highway. The zoning district is A1, and the request is for a special use permit to construct and operate a building supply store. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. There are 10 conditions attached to this case at this time. This case was introduced to the Planning Commission September 23rd, 2024, and a public hearing held October 21st, 2024. The Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval of this case to the Board of Supervisors. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing? If so, your next regularly scheduled meeting is December 9th, 2024, at 6:00 P.M.
We need to set a time for a public hearing for this. Next meet.
December what? The next meet? That we hold a public hearing on December 9th, next meet.
Second.
I'll second it, and to be honest with you, not that it makes any difference, but I believe the sites in my district, Ms. Emerson, instead of the Curderville District, I think that's a misprint, unless I'm wrong. I'm pretty familiar with the district. I think that's in, in my district, but I look forward to coming to that area.
Absolutely, and we may want to note that you've alerted Mr. Frederick for some traffic concerns, because this is located at that same location there at the, for site.
Which will increase the traffic, so the passing zone would be even more of a danger, especially with big trucks coming in and out.
Would you second that we set a public hearing on December 9th at 6:00? Are there any questions? All in favor? That's all, Ms. Emerson. Let's move on over to M. Department of Agents Reports and Items for Consideration. Number one, the sheriff's department consider request to transfer surplus vehicles to the Buckingham County School Board. What is the pledge of the board? Come on, Sheriff.
Hello, gentlemen. How are you this evening?
Good morning, sir.
We've got 2015 Ford Explorer, 16 Ford Explorer, and a 17 Ford Explorer. I'd like to give it over to the school board. That would be all right.
Is there a motion to support this?
So make a motion.
If it's motion and second, we'll support this. Are there any questions? All in favor?
On distance by any chance? And Board of Supervisors.
Is Ms. Krebs still on the phone?
Yes, not.
I'm sorry.
Oh, well, I had my thing, and I think it was approved. I could barely hear, but I'm pretty sure it was approved.
It was approved. It was approved by all the supervisors present, ma'am.
We can be in touch tomorrow, Ms. Krebs, and finalize your permit.
You voted, let me see.
Thought Angel was calling me there.
All right, let's look at number two. That passed unanimously. Six, Sheriff Department, consider appropriation of insurance funds for wreck patrol cars in amount of $38,074.41.
Goodbye.
Goodbye, ma'am, and $11,581.06 for the equipment back to the sheriff's budget. What is your pledge, board?
Chairman, that 11,000 has been deducted $250, so it's 11,331.06.
Okay, 11,000. 331, okay, Sheriff, thank you. What is the pledge of the board?
I'm making motion we approve it, Mr. Chairman.
If it's motion and second, we approve it. Are there any questions? All in favor? Six yes, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Move on down to number three. Consider selling surplus ambulances and EMS vehicles with sealed bids. What were you doing on the call?
Yes, so we talked with Cody and Kirby with EMS. You know, a lot of time when the sheriff's has the auction, we will put vehicles in that auction as well. We feel that we can get more money for these vehicles that we do sealed bids for them. So our suggestion is that we do like a procurement process. We advertise, take sealed bids, and people possibly want to buy these vehicles, and then give it to the largest bidder. So it's just another way of trying to get more money for these surplus vehicles, instead of getting like $100, $200 from it. It's just another way of trying to get more money for these surplus vehicles instead of getting like a hundred and two hundred dollars from it at the auction. So I think he gave you three vehicles. There's two squad vehicles and a two thousand and one Ford Excursion that they're looking to do sealed bids on.
Carl, I had had, uh, some constituents in my district who had made mention, um, they saw them sitting in the field and was wondering what they were going to do with them. Of course, I reached out to them and told them that they were planning on putting them up for sealed bids. They made mention that, uh, why won't we donate them to the folks in North Carolina or Georgia, or the, the people who, some of the, some of those, uh, departments down there lost everything. Um, I mean, is that something that, that we could do financially, or is it, would it be a lot of red tape?
Bring your maker to Georgia? That's the thing about it.
Well, one of them won't, but the other two I think would.
Yeah, um, we would have to look into that legal-wise if we could do that. I mean, normally bids and auctions have the county gets rid of surplus vehicles, so it gives everybody a chance to.
I understand. I was just thinking, considering the devastation that those people down there suffered and, and all the loss that they had, I mean.
Boy, the three are good.
Huh?
You know the three of the ambulance are much good.
Uh, one of them has two bad turbos, uh, I don't know about the other one, but I know the excursion looked like it's in pretty good shape. I mean, I was just, I was just throwing it out there, I mean.
Right, okay.
Um, I mean, I'd be glad to look into it.
I'm just passing it along. I mean, it's, you know, it was.
We, we need to get to know what locality or what agency was, it's introduced as well.
Right, I mean, I know it's, it's, you'd have to, uh, you'd have to find a department that needed it and, and what have you, but I just, I'm just throwing it out there. I think it would be a good gesture from the county. Uh, and I think, you know, most of the folks in the county would be, uh, on board with it. Because like you said, we're not going to get, we're not going to get a tremendous amount of money for them, no matter how we get rid of them, and that, that way it would do, I think, more good, uh, but you check into it if you, if you would.
I'm all for going to give it to somebody that needs them, you know?
I mean, even, even, even that being said, you know, maybe some, uh, departments around volunteer departments that, that are struggling, you know, whatever. I, I'm just thinking. Ain't going to get a lot of money for them anyway, so if you did something really good with them, uh, to me, it would be better than money. That's just me, and I'm saying that it's taxpayer money, so I'll probably get crucified over that, but anyway, I stand behind what I said.
All right, well, and your motion, uh, do you want to make a motion to declare these vehicles as surplus items, so we can look into it either way, but we need to somehow get the board to declare that these items are no longer in service for the county?
I'd say, I mean, I, if it's okay, I'd like to make the motion that we disperse of them, but if we check into it and see that it's feasible, that we could do, you know, donate them to a department that's in need, that we go that route rather than go through the hassle of trying to take a sealed bid.
And that's what I'm saying, just make them, in your motion, say they're surplus, that they're no longer in service for the county, then we can.
Okay, so I, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second it? Second it?
Okay, if it motion and second, then we would do this. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Uh, number four, consider additional donation of fifteen hundred dollars to Pete Martin Senior Resources for the remote area medical event. This is additional to the one thousand donated in August. I think what the most candidates done, give twenty-five hundred?
Yes, sir. So we were trying to make sure we didn't miss out on, uh, contributing, so we kind of maybe jumped the gun a little bit, and we make sure we got our donation in. Now they're asking all the surrounding counties to contribute twenty-five hundred dollars, so that's where we're the fifteen hundred dollars short. We did a thousand back in August.
The motion?
And it comes out of that, that, like a COVID money or whatever we call it.
I think the last one we did, it was a small amount. We just took it out of, into your balance.
Okay. All right, but anyway, uh, yeah, they, uh, when I first introduced and asked for the thousand dollars, I was just told, you know, they were looking for anything that they could get. And then when they looked at what it was going to cost them, they was amended when the next P S R meeting that I attended, that they were requesting twenty-five hundred dollars from each of the counties that P S R serves. And so that was approved by the other counties, as far as I know, the ones it went to, and so we just wanted to make it up so that ours would be the twenty-five hundred as all of the surrounding counties.
So the motion was.
Yes, sir, I, I'd make that motion that we do that, make it fifteen hundred additional dollars.
Second?
Second.
If it motion and second, then we have contributed the fifteen hundred extra dollars, uh, to this. Uh, are there any questions on the motion?
Get them. Get them the only one, doesn't have a vote. There you go.
Okay, good.
Get the nap, Mr. Allen.
You fine, no. Mind them, messed up all over here.
Let's move down to county attorney matters. Mr. Wright?
Coming.
Got there, boy.
Nothing, he's just going crazy.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, and Board members, I have a little bit of business tonight that we need to talk about. As the board is aware, last, uh, at its last meeting, you authorized the county administrator to, uh, enter into a contract with the Central Virginia Christian School for the sale of property in the industrial park. I want to advise you, the contract was executed the next day, and then a few days after that returned by the Christian School. If you remember, the highlights of that contract was the purchase price would be six thousand dollars an acre. The acreage would be determined by a survey, a preliminary survey has been done, and the amount of acreage that it appears that's going to be involved is a little bit about seven and a half acres, a little shy of seven and a half acres. That the school would have the right to access that property down Industrial Park Road, and also an easement running into the balance of the property to access their property. Uh, we, county would enter into a road maintenance agreement. Share the expense of maintaining the Industrial Park Road until the state took that road over. The school had until November eighth to do any feasibility studies and financial studies they wanted to do. If they weren't successful or weren't satisfied with those results, they had the right to cancel the contract. Carter and I received an email last week prior to the eighth indicating that they had completed that, uh, studies, and they were wanting to proceed. Their projected closing date would be not later than April fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-five. It'll take a little bit of time to do that. The process that the board has to go through is the next step would be for the board to set a public hearing to receive public comments, to hear what they think about the sale of this property. After you receive their comments, then if you're still inclined to proceed, you would have a right to, uh, you would make your motions to go ahead and continue with the sale. The other part of this deal is that the school, the property that they are buying. A, a construction of a school that they would be constructing is not a matter of right. In the, uh, contract, it provides that the board would ask the planning commission to consider zoning the property to give them a right to construct a school as a matter of right. So that's, has to be thought about too. So the next, uh, that brings us to where we are tonight. Board wants to keep this on track, really, to try to get this thing closed by next April. What, uh, you should consider is maybe a motion to set a public hearing for the sale of the property to the Christian School, and to have that public hearing on December ninth at your next meeting. It would include that, uh, the sale of the land of the seven point four one three acres, the six thousand dollars an acre, an easement to access the property, and a road maintenance agreement between the county and the school for the maintenance of Industrial Park Road. That motion would be, need to be considered if we were to keep this on track, so. Chairman, I'd ask whether you want to take this piecemeal, or whether you want me to tell you the rest of what you need to be thinking about. The other part would be if you decide to proceed, uh, this property right now is zoned N C one. The only zoning district that you have to construct a private school as a matter of right is B C one. Property, if you remember the maps from the property, part where I'm going to call it the soccer field side, so you'll know what we're talking about. On that side, uh, B C one lends itself pretty well, because that's a mixed use. That would include schools, other small retail types of business, and housing of various types. The backside, which ultimately will probably be accessed off of Wingo Road, probably lends itself to, uh, a more commercial light industrial type thing. So the discussion has been, and it's entirely up to the board, I want, they would like to proceed, if you want to proceed, is to zone the front two-thirds of the property. The soccer field would go from N C one to V C one, and you'd ask the planning commission to consider that and send your recommendation back. The back part of property would go from N C one to, to light industrial or M one to allow types of things, garages, warehouses, those types of things to go in that. There's no magic in that. That's entirely up to the board what they would like to do. So to keep this project moving, the first thing would, you'd need to have a public hearing, and it would require a motion to that. You're going to need to instruct the planning commission to look at, uh, the zoning, because it has to go to the planning commission. They have a hundred and twenty days to make a report, but hopefully it won't take them that long. If they don't make it in that length of time, then you have the right to do what you want to do. But, uh, to get them on track, they could be introduced to them at their December meeting. They could hold a public hearing in January, make a report back to you in February. Y'all would set your public hearing in March, and then you'd be able to close sometime between March and April. So it, it sounds like a long time off, but in terms of the things that have to be done, it's not that much flexibility in the timeline. And that's my report. Mr. Chairman, be happy to answer any questions that any members of the board might have.
Need two motion, though, Mr. Wright?
Actually, you do. You, you could do it in two or three motions. First would be to set the public hearing.
Give the motion to set the public hearing.
I, I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for, uh, December ninth.
Second?
If it motion and second, then we set the public hearing for December the ninth. Are there any questions? All in favor?
And the more complicated question is, uh, the request of the planning commission in terms of the zoning. Uh, as I say, the contract called for a, uh, questioning the planning commission to amend it to a zone that would, uh, be able to construct a private school as a matter of right, and that's, uh, V C one. And the second part of that, if that zoning is satisfactory to you, the question is whether you want to rezone the whole park to V C one, or whether you want to divide it up for different uses the way it lays.
Isn't the, the school is up there right now, aren't they M one right now?
Uh, the.
Where we left it, like everyone.
School is N C one. I think that whole park. M one.
With the S U P.
Right.
Well, that, I mean, that's what I'm saying, uh, I'm thinking about, are you counting on changing them too?
The whole park would change. They, they would, they would, at that point, become a conforming use. And they're, they would not need that special use permit to have that school there. Now, I'm not, I'm just to, I, I, I don't think you can make anything by it, but I'm not planning on doing anything with it. You all got to decide what y'all want to do with it, okay? I, 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 I'm, I'm just, I'll talk about your options and your possibilities, but at the end of the day, that's y'all's decision. I don't vote on these things.
Sir me correctly, I think on the last one, we talked about doing the whole thing, uh.
Talked about doing the whole thing, there's all the possibilities, and again, that is entirely up to y'all. If you want to do the whole thing, then probably V C one is, is where you do. Does give them the right to, uh.
I think that'd be the wisest thing to do, do it all at one time, then you have to come back, keep coming back, going over the same thing.
So the motion in that case would be, uh, would be to ask the planning commission to make a recommendation on the rezoning of the industrial park from N C one to V C one.
All right, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we move that the planning commission consider making their recommendation on rezoning the northern two-third portion of the industrial park from N C one to V C one, which would allow the Central Virginia Christian School to construct the school as a matter of right.
Got a motion and a second?
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So Mr., uh, Garrett's motion was only on a portion of the nine and a half acres on the Christian school at this point?
Seven and a half.
Uh, seven and a half acres. Is that correct?
It's, it's so that this Christian school would be able to construct their.
Right, this has nothing to do with the whole parcel at this point. Is that correct?
It has to do with two-thirds of the parcel, right?
It's more than the Christian school, Mr. Gill. But his motion literally is more, it is probably about from where that ravine runs down on the backside of the property out to, uh, the road.
Okay, but this is not the whole hundred and twenty-five out?
A whole hundred and twenty-five acres. It's, it's the front part of it.
Okay, thank you.
So you, you want to add the both of them to it, the M one too? Or you guys going to make the second motion?
If you want to add an and to it, you can just, if, if you care to do that, if you don't want to do that, that's entirely up to you.
Can I interact a little bit, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, District Two stands completely against, uh, the recommendation of doing the whole property. Uh, I've talked to constituents in that district, and they're not in favor of it. That is absolutely in my district. Uh, I understand that, uh, the motion may be on the board or whatnot, but I just want to make a public record that District Two is absolutely against, uh, rezoning the whole property. I would definitely be in favor of the way we have it on the paper of the part that's the Christian school, but my vote would not be to combine them completely together. If it's completely together, uh, I need to know the motion, because I plan on voting against it.
All right, I just want to leave my motion the way it is for the two-thirds part, for the school to be able to do by right and not have to get a special use permit.
Just to be clear, when you say two-thirds, I don't, I don't want to make a misunderstanding of that. You're talking about more than the seven acres.
Right, more than the seven acres, but the, the part that borders that and goes behind it.
Right.
The first two-thirds.
It actually included, uh, uh, it, right now, we're probably talking about including James River in it, in case that ever comes into play, James River's grandfather, so it wouldn't have any long-term impact on them continuing to operate.
The only thing you're voting on is just to let the planning commission consider making a recommendation. You're not voting on giving it up to another.
I won't be in favor of making the recommendation, but that's fine if the board chooses to.
And the move, and then.
But what Mr. Garrett did, I would be glad to, I, I, I'll be in favor of that. The third part of it, I, is what I'm saying, I wouldn't be in favor of. I have no problem with other board members decide. That's just me, myself.
Favor the motion?
So to clarify the motion before we vote, I want to know.
Yeah.
We're just voting on the part that the Christian school needs to.
The, the, the two-thirds part of it.
I understand it's more than seven and a half acres, but, which will include James River, because they may end up, but it's not the whole parcel.
Not the whole parcel.
So you're not counting the two-thirds?
You're not voting on it anyhow.
Not, not taking the back part.
Planning commission to recommend it.
That's fine, go ahead.
Send it to the planning commission. We, we're not changing it right now.
Right, I'm staying, I'm just.
Planning commission.
It's a recommendation to the planning commission. That's all it is. They don't, they don't make no deals whatsoever.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion? Yes. Second? Yes, yes, yes.
I sense that the board's not ready to proceed on the, on the back part of it, so I will get out of the way so y'all can proceed with other business, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, members.
County administrators report?
Uh, I have no items missed tonight, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just wishing you all happy Thanksgiving with your family and friends, and we will see you all in December.
Uh, other board matters?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's my understanding that Mr. James Jones, who was the, I guess he called it the polling chief, is that what you call the polling chief? For, in my district at, uh, Chestnut Grove, uh, he'd been in that position for forty-two years, and I think, uh, I think it'd be appropriate that we do a resolution in his honor. And, uh, if you could make that happen, I would appreciate it. And I make, I make that motion that we do a resolution in his honor.
Give a second?
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second, then we will do a resolution honoring James Jones. All right? All in favor? Those opposed? Six yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead, Cameron. Go ahead, go ahead, Cameron.
First of all, I'd like to thank your fellow board members in the county for the donation to Dillon Halloween. I think it was a great success. If anybody came through Dillon, I think they would have seen the massive Halloween, and I think that was a well-done, and I want to tell my fellow, fellow board members, thank you for contributing to that, because not only was it just a town of Dillon, it was a whole county. And the second part is, is on Saturday, we have a semi-Christmas coming up in Buckingham. We have the first day of opening hunting season. And I just want to tell the constituents and the people of the county, number one, please pray Saturday, everybody comes home safely, whether you are a steel hunter, whether you are a dog hunter, or whatever you are, I would hope that we would all abide by property rights and try to get along the best we can. And to the people that are traveling the roads, you're going to see a lot of orange hats on Saturday, you're going to see a lot of nice-looking dogs on Saturday. These people love their dogs like they do their family. So I'd like to ask the citizens of Buckingham, if they're traveling on Saturday, please try to use caution. These people, I can remember as a kid, I didn't even sleep at night before. It was more important to me than Christmas, and my kids are looking forward to it as well. But if we could tell the citizens of county, please try to work together and try to have a safe day on Saturday, where everybody can enjoy what they do in a safely and appropriate manner, okay?
Thanks. I'd like to see the board pass a resolution honoring Ernest Jackson. He passed back in October. He worked in the community in the county, he was a owner of Keystone Lodge one eighty-eighth, which is a district master back there for Brother Doug Gregory. I'd like the board to do that in December, like the board's pledge of the board. Second? Motion is second, and we'll pass a resolution honoring Ernest Jackson in December. Are there any questions? All in favor? Six yes. Anything else we need to board before the board, before we adjourn? We don't have to go into exact session there, we got that taken care of. I'd like to see the board members in the back after we adjourn. We've got five minutes, all the board members? We adjourn.